Good evening, everybody. We're going to call this meeting to order. This is the regular session, our 27th regular session, the mayor and council. The first thing we'll do is have our invocation by Councilmember Munson, and then, following that, we'll do our pledge to the flag.
I'm going to do this a little differently tonight. I hope the microphone's on. Thank you, Mayor. This is a very short and a very powerful prayer, even though it contains a bit of humor. When it was originally written, it was to be used when arising from bed in the morning, but it really applies throughout the day. Dear God, so far today, I've done all right. I haven't gossiped, and I haven't lost my temper. I haven't been grumpy, nasty, selfish, mean, or arrogant. Not even have I told a little white lie. But in a few minutes, God, I'm going to get out of bed, and then, I'm going to need a lot of help, as are all of us. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Thanks, Tom. Announcements for the evening. We are following the rules of procedure adopted on September 24th of this year. Use of cellphones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. And our meeting, upcoming meeting schedule, just a reminder, we are not going to be meeting next Tuesday, the 29th of October. Tuesday, November 5th, November 12th, and 19th, we'll have regular work sessions at 4:00 PM. And on Tuesday, November 26th, we'll have a regular session at 7:00 PM. And I just want to welcome everybody here tonight. It's great to see so many folks here in the audience. At this point, we're going to have citizen comments, and as soon as the clerk gives me the list, I will call these folks up. First on the list is Mr. Leonard Cooper. Mr. Cooper, please come, and I just want to remind folks that citizen comments are limited to five minutes per individual. Meetings are televised and recorded, and your comments will be on air and on tape and on YouTube. So please, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, everybody. This is Leonard Cooper of Hagerstown, Maryland. I'm the barber here in Hagerstown. Get a lot of information where I live, I mean, where I'm working at, I get a lot of information from the young and the old and in-between. And I hear a lot say, "I only come up here to really get an eye view of, you can see, tell me what can I do, or how far can I, what can I do to push this, what I got to bring to you about child support." And I don't know exactly whom to see or whom to go to, but I want to talk about child support about, for men, young men, not today. There's so many of our young men today that are going to jail for child support, and it seems to me that it's, it's not right that one person should be taking responsibility for having a child. It's not all the man's fault. I think it's the woman's fault as well as the man, and I think that they ought to make it equal rights for them both. If they both made a child, then they both should pay. I think they both should be able to make a payment to that cause, instead of just blaming on the man, and the man goes to jail, and the woman goes and have another baby, she gets a bigger check. And the more babies she had, the bigger the checks. I think she can only get three now. But that's making prostitutes out of, out of young girls, making the young girls look up and say, "Well, if I can't get a job, I'll just get a baby." And then the man will go to jail, spends one year, and he come out to get a job, you give him three months to get a job. It's impossible to find a job in three months. So he goes back to jail for another year. Then when he gets out, he's, it's the same thing repeated over and over. And I'm trying to get, I drew up a petition here, and I want to know if I'm doing it the right way. I'd like to know if I'm doing it the right way, because I'm getting a lot of signatures from people who I think, would you think this is a good idea to push and to get, get this going so that young men will not spend their time in jail for having a child and let the woman go free? The woman should be also punished, because they're both are. And I think what they should do is to, to solve this. I got, one thing I think they should solve it is to let both of them pay child support and let them both be responsible to, to take care of that child. And if they get a job, then, and they're supposed to do that, both of them together, instead of putting them in jail, and then they come out, then we have to take care of somebody else's child and, with the taxes and stuff. It's not fair. It's not fair to the, to the, to the people out here, it's not fair to the young man, that he should be the one punished for having a child. Now, the man cannot have a child unless the woman decides to say yes or no. So she really has got to say so to have a child, not the man. And I think we put all the blame on the man and everything, and I think that these women today ought to be able to, these young girls should think before they start to have sex with a young man, that they're going to be just as responsible as he is. And I think if you do this, this will also help our young ladies that's coming up to be young girls and not to want to go out and run, run and get a child, just to get a check. I think I'm, I don't know if I'm doing it the right way, but I got a lot of signatures, a lot of people that said this is good to do, and I would like to also have your input to, to help me to get this thing started, to see how I can, you know, to get it done.
I can just tell you that the city has no say in child support laws. Those are state laws. So you would want to speak to our delegate and senator on the local level to change the state law, because that's where child support is governed, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, so, so your delegate to the House of Delegates, in the city here is John Donahue, state senator, that, those are the folks you got to talk to if you're looking at changing the law.
Ah.
Yes.
Okay.
But I appreciate you sharing your thoughts.
Very good. And I, if you don't mind, if, you know, somebody thinks the way I do about this, I also can take your signature too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Tom Bartles.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I come before you tonight as an officer of the city of Hagerstown and the president of ASME 3373. I want to assure you, the officers of Hagerstown City Police Department remain committed to the city of Hagerstown. My officers stand together and united to serve the citizens of the city in the best possible way to protect them along with their property. I know the city is going on, undergoing some rough times recently economically and along with the criminal activity. My officers have stood firm alongside with the city, willing to assist and have done so without faltering. HPD, too, has gone through some hard times, and they still are on hard times. Through retirements and officers leaving for other law enforcement jobs, it has left our department to struggle with manpower issues. The police department administration has worked tirelessly to address this issue and find good, hard-working police officers to fill our ranks. To their credit, they've been able to hire 20 new police officers this year. We still have a way to go, though. What I ask for the mayor and council is to stand with us, the officers of the city of Hagerstown, as they are and are still unwaveringly standing with you to protect the citizens of Hagerstown. We ask you to consider us to show us the light at the end of the tunnel by assisting us with the re-implementation of our longevity rate increases. We understand this is a very difficult situation and requires due diligence on your behalf. With the restoration of the longevity rate steps, it would assist the city and the police department in retaining good, hard-working officers, working to make Hagerstown a safe and wonderful city to live in and work in. I wish to thank the mayor and council for listening to me and trying to work with these police officers during this difficult process. Thank you, and have a safe night.
Thank you. Next up, we have Tim Rossiter.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman.
Good evening.
I'm Officer Rossiter. I'm a 24-year veteran with Hagerstown City Police, a dedicated officer. I've been working for this marvelous city, and I'm still not at the top pay rate. I actually missed it by eight days back when they froze the scales. I guess I just wanted to put a face with what's going on with the pay rates here. The dedicated men and women of Hagerstown have endured pay freezes for a low days, sick leave sellback, being whittled down to a fraction of what I was told I'd get when I got hired. I'm going to end up having to stay probably 30 years to get 60% of the rate I'm at, just to make up for where I should be. I'll have two daughters that's going to college, and the extra money from being at the pay rate where I should be would be greatly appreciated. So please try to give us a break and see if you can see to it to unfreeze the steps. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Paul Sweeney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Paul Sweeney from Hagerstown, Maryland. I'm representing a group, independent group, that has a vision for the ice rink. We presented a proposal to the city. I know the city, I don't know if you've actually seen it or not yet, but we feel that we can take the rank in a much more positive direction than it's been going currently, and we want to see it really prosper and do much better than what, what it's been doing over the last couple of years. So, and I'm here primarily, if you have any questions afterwards, I'll be more happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Christopher, is it Wath? Watt. Mr. Watt, Officer Watt. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Chris Watt with the police department here in the city of Hagerstown. My speech a little bit is in reference to the steps and the pay here in Hagerstown for the police officers and other employees who have not gotten their steps. I decided to talk to you a little bit tonight, because I am one of the officers who is looking to leave the city of Hagerstown for better opportunity because of one thing, and that comes down to pay. Other agencies have the same work schedule, rotating shifts, 12-hour days as we do, but the pay is considerably more. And that's why I'm here to talk to you a little bit tonight. Like I said, I'm Chris Watt. I've been employed with the Hagerstown City Police Department since November 2001, and as I come upon my 12th year serving with the city, I find myself looking elsewhere for employment. As a married father of three children under five, it has sadly become necessary for me to try to move on, because the city has done nothing to bring our police force up to par in terms of pay and benefits. As much as I didn't want the pay freeze to happen four years ago, back then, I understood the predicament that the city was in, and the economy was struggling nationwide. But as things seem to have improved, the city has still chosen not to give us our steps. These steps reward longevity and loyalty to the city. I would like to remind each and every one of you that our union is not even asking for a raise, we're just asking for our steps, which have already been agreed to by a previous council. Remember, these officers are working tirelessly around the clock, missing time with family, and risking their lives for some paycheck that they have been receiving since 2008, no pay difference. Meanwhile, costs go up for gas, utilities, groceries, et cetera. Since the city has not responded by giving us something, anything, I have decided to look elsewhere for future employment. It was a tough choice, as this is where I began my career and I look to end my career, but in the end, I have to do what is necessary to support my family. I know I'm not the only one who feels this way, and this is a problem. When loyal officers decide they can be loyal no more, please support the police department and give them the steps they deserve before more officers make the move elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is John Lippi. I've been a police officer with the Hagerstown Police Department for approximately two years. I want to tell you a little bit about myself here. I'm 24 years old. I just graduated from college, 2011. I'm currently scheduled to get married next year. Hooray. My fiancee and I bought our first home this past April in Greencastle, PA. When I got hired, hired at HPD, I was very excited, because this city gave me the opportunity to become a police officer. This was my longtime dream, and it came true. When I got hired here, I understood that the city was having issues with their steps as far as paying their employees. I had many different goals in my life that I want to achieve as far as this career goes. I want to dedicate 25 years of my life, if not more, to this city, because they gave me the opportunity to live out my dream as a police officer. Even though we haven't received raises in a few years, I still watch people go to work because they have to. People have bills to pay, they have families to raise. I plan on having children in the near future myself. But with the way this department and this city is suffering, I don't believe I can stay here financially. I honestly don't see a future here as this department, as officers constantly coming in and out. I see other surrounding departments having issues as well, but they aren't taking top priority of taking care of their city employees. If things don't get better in the near future, I will be forced to look elsewhere, as many other officers are in the same situation as I am. If Hagerstown wants to thrive and succeed as a city, I believe the streets need to be clean and safe. I truly believe that fire, police, our public works department, et cetera, we are the roots of Hagerstown. If a tree doesn't have roots, how does it grow? I know that sounds ridiculous, but that's the way I put it in simple terms. Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas Cox.
Good evening. I'd first like to thank the mayor and council for letting me speak. My name is Thomas Cox, and I am also employed at the city police. I have worked here for approximately four years following my military service, and I plan to spend a long career with the city police. During my time here, I have watched as experienced, talented, motivated officers have reluctantly left this department for other jurisdictions for higher pay and, in some instances, a reduced workload. I believe the exodus of good police officers does nothing other than hurt the city while other law enforcement agencies reap the benefits. I believe a strong police force is essential for Hagerstown's growth, and the proposal our union has brought will do nothing other than strengthen our police force and this city. I believe what we have proposed is fair, and it will keep experienced police officers here in Hagerstown, as well as attract top-tier applicants to keep this city police department going for years to come. After approximately five years, it is time for all city workers to start down the path of being made whole again. Once again, thank you for letting me speak.
John Murray.
Mayor, council, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak as well. You call it John Murray, but you probably know me also as, just as Victor. We first spoke and met and spoke at a June executive session, when we asked for our contracts to all city workers' contracts to be extended for all bargaining groups. I spoke at that time about our city and how critical all of us are to the safety and security of our citizens, our visitors, and our investors. Unlike a business based on profit and delivering a product, our city is charged with providing safety, security, and improving the quality of life. It's safe to say that we are keenly aware of this mission. Whether we're crawling down a hot, smoky hallway or delivering lifesaving medical care, your fire department is always on the front line. We are also keenly aware of the economic challenges facing this city, and perhaps more importantly, the residents of this city. Earlier today, my fellow professional firefighters distributed over 300 coats to qualified children at Winter Street Elementary School, kids in need. We were a huge donor to the city's heating assistance program. We're aware of the need. Our foundation has given over $1.2 million to other nonprofits in the last eight years, something that we're very, very proud of. We're the ones providing care to the injured and the ill, helping control water leaks, installing smoke detectors, and of course, fighting fires. We are all well aware of the need of the people in this community. We are very much in touch with it. You know, the Hagerstown firefighter story is, is actually quite unique. It's one of the reasons that I'm here. We have been and continue to be understaffed. While most municipalities have four or five firefighters on engines and trucks, we have one or two, and I'm sure you folks have heard this before. We train relentlessly to prepare our people to make good decisions early on in incidents, and quite often, operating independently. It takes years to bring people up to speed at this level to be able to make those kinds of decisions. It's not an easy position to fill, and we, like HPD, have lost good, qualified people in the last four and a half years. We're also a very humble group. Earlier this month, some of you actually attended a medal ceremony where 20 firefighters were recognized for heroism in the line of duty. Exactly none of those who were recognized wanted to be recognized. Their humility is matched only by their pride. It's not in our nature to be asking for help, but that's the very reason that I and we are sitting before you tonight. Make no mistake about it, I'm, I think I'm going to be the only one speaking for the fire department, but we are speaking with a unified voice. Your firefighters, as well as the rest of your city employees, have weathered four and a half years without any pay increase, either a cost of living raise or the scheduled longevity step. We have firefighters who have had their pay reduced more than 20% over this time period from where they're supposed to be by the contract that was, you know, the contract pay schedule that we continue to use from four and a half years ago. Based on a study that we asked the IFF to do for our department, our salary schedule is already well below comparable departments in the region. We've all picked up additional duties, and we're trying to work around the unfilled vacancies in our department. And I can tell you that some days, the exhaustion is palpable, the frustration is palpable, and that's on the street, not just with us, not just with our brothers in blue, sisters in blue, but it's with a lot of city employees. In an attempt to explain our situation, we had a lot of questions, and we actually met with Mr. Zimmerman, and he was kind enough to explain how city government worked. We were curious, where is our impasse? Who is it that, that we should come to? Who is it that's saying no, if you will? And he was quite frank and said, "Look, I, I put numbers in front of them and said, 'We need to recognize that it's time to fulfill steps and COLAs,' and that it's mayor and council that aren't able to do it." And that's why we, that's why we find ourselves in the position where we're in front of you tonight, asking for your help. We continue to want to negotiate. When we met in executive session, it was actually Councilman Metzner that said, "If we do extend this, I want to make sure that you guys keep coming to the table." And my immediate response is, "We have been coming to the table." The last three meetings that we have had with the city team were prompted by us. Our last meeting was on August 27th, and we have heard nothing since that time. We were told, "We'll call you," and nothing. I want to be clear, I hope that you folks don't think that we haven't been coming to the table. We are anxious to come up with a solution that benefits the city and the people that you're looking at behind me. Without getting into specifics, because we have an agreement that we won't get into specifics, I think it's fair to say that from where we started and from where the city started, we have come much farther to center with a very realistic plan. We were told to work within our budget and find additional money within our budget, the existing year budget that we're in right now. And we found items within that budget, and they were dismissed. So I'm just here to tell you that our folks are tired, morale is not good, but as, as Officer Bartle said, we absolutely stand firm. There is one thing that we're here to do, and it's to protect the residents, and we will continue to do that unwaveringly, proudly, as we always have. But what we're looking for is some sort of roadmap to what we call restoration, what they referred to also as restoration, where employees should be. So in closing, we're asking for your help. We're a prideful bunch. From where you sit, please look at us, we're asking for your help. We respond to you in your time of need, the citizens in their time of need. As they look at us, we are now asking for your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. It is now time for city administrator comments.
I'll check and see if there's any more citizen comments.
Oh, okay. I don't think we have any other people signed up. Is there anyone else who would like to come to the podium? Okay. Thank you all again. I appreciate all the work that all of our city employees do, and especially those charged with protecting life and property you do, and your families make lots of sacrifices that we certainly recognize, and look forward to continuing the conversations. Mr. City Administrator.
Well, if I could, just along the themes of the comments, there's no question that our employees made sacrifices over the last four years, and they, they have across the board. Mayor and council is aware of that, you're all aware of that. I think that's a testament to our employees. I think the professionalism of your comments tonight is also a positive testament to who you are. I did want to mention that Scott and Karen received your most recent proposals this week. We forwarded those to the mayor and council. We discussed those and presented those to the mayor and council in executive session earlier this evening. So we're trying to follow up on the most recent proposals we've received from the unions. That's it for me.
Okay, thanks. On to council comments. I'm going to start over here on my left with Ms. Nye tonight.
I have none.
Mr. Munson.
I have none.
Mr. Metzner.
I have a couple of them. One, I am happy to say, along the lines of these discussions, it, last Thursday, I was able to represent the city of Hagerstown at the exchange club, where Andy Hartman was given the award of firefighter of the year. And I congratulate Andy. I believe I'm going to be out there in two weeks for the presentation to the police officer of the year, whom I do not know who it is, but have to assume if they've asked a city council member to be there, that it will be a Hagerstown city police officer. The only other comment I will make with the comments we've received is, I would hope after all the years that I've been up here, that the police officers and the firefighters in this community recognize my past and continued support, excluding the 3-2 vote. Two of us are up here who voted for Springstead, which if we'd not gotten Springstead, God knows where we would be. Having said that, I would just ask everybody to avoid the very, very, very slippery slope of negotiating in public. I understand that it's been said that we've offered nothing. That's not accurate, okay? I'm not here to say what we've offered, but I also don't necessarily think that some of the unions necessarily want us to say what you've demanded, and what the tax increase of potentially double digits that we would have to do to meet those requirements. To answer the questions, yeah, we had four years of horror, and did all of our city employees absolutely step to the forefront, more so than in the history of the city. Matter of fact, without question, the easiest negotiations we've ever had with our bargaining units have been when we took everything away from you. units have been when we took everything away from you. And you did recognize the necessity, you did recognize where we're at. The only thing I would ask you to do is recognize that nobody, whether it's public sector or private sector employees, have been made 100% whole in this year to act like the four bad years not only have gone away, but have so doubled that we can suddenly go and get everybody in one year current. And that's the only thing I would say, except to say that, yeah, I appreciate very much the fact that we're all together, and we are all together. I don't think there's any issue of some of the members up here that have given the support that we have given and will continue to give. So I would ask you to work with us as we work with you. I personally have said it before, and I will say it again, one of the only members who've ever said it and repeatedly have said it, I will raise taxes to meet the obligations that we have. I do not begrudge that, and I will do it. I've done it in the past, and I will do in the future, and I've called for it. But there is a limit to how much we can raise taxes, especially in any one year. We're going to be raising utilities because we have to, and I anticipate a tax increase, and I anticipate the tax increase is going to be able to take care of the obligations we have. And the other thing we all collectively have to worry about and have to be cautious of, there is a line of which the public supports employees, and there is a line where the public says, "You can't raise our taxes that much." Together, we have got to find that in-between where whatever revenue increases we have to get do not end up becoming a resentment by our community to the people that we're paying. And I think you all know what I mean. You get different mail calls, some of them saying, "Pay people more," some of them saying, "You people are fools," meaning city council. So I certainly look forward to working with you all and hope you do the same, and appreciate what did not surprise me at all tonight, and that's the professionalism that you have shown in the past and are showing now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brubaker.
Last Thursday and Friday, I had the privilege of attending the MML Fall Conference, Maryland Municipal League, and I thought it was one of the most productive ever. I attended sessions on economic development tools, ethics, and open meetings, a discussion among the large cities of issues facing them, an interesting session with the Southern Maryland delegation about legislative process, went up to John Bohannon and shook his hand and said, "Thank you very much." But it was all good. And on the issue of double taxation, the legislative priority adopted as in past years was highway user revenues, of which, speaking of revenues, you know, the city lost all but seven, we went down to 7% of our highway user revenues. Last year, the governor gave us a one-time increase that brought us back to 24% of what those were before 2009. So, you know, we face a lot of issues like that, and by the way, unlike a lot of other parts of Maryland, we may still face a drop in our tax base due to lower property tax assessments this coming year. We'll get the results of that in December and January. We could be down as much as a percent or more in our tax base, but until we know that, it's very difficult to pledge significant increases in future-year expenditures, which again, could result in double-digit tax increases, which I don't think any of us favor. So I'm diverting from MML, but the double taxation issue, which I think is a good out for many of the larger municipalities, it was decided to work this year, to attempt to work with the counties, with the legislative leadership, to try to get more awareness of the issue. There's been a special committee set up to do that, discussions scheduled with those bodies starting as early as next month, and that'll be worked on this year. And many in the membership made it clear they want to see a positive disposition about taking this to the legislature next year. And I already mentioned some of the problems that the city faces, and again, all of us up here appreciate the city employees, the fire and police, their efforts, their ability that they have stuck with the city, but we have not recovered. And it is sorry to say that there's communities in which people are willing to commute to that are offering more than maybe we might be able to afford under the best of circumstances right now. It's a very difficult equation. I like to tell people, it's an equation. You have citizens, you have the employees, you have the tax base, and to balance, you have business. And that's one final thing I want to say, not only is it a question of whether higher, significantly higher tax rates will be popular with the citizenry, but what does it do to that tax base if it keeps businesses from investing here? So it's a tough issue, and it's a tough equation, and we're all trying to work to find solutions, and we have, well, I won't go into the negotiations, but it isn't true to say that we haven't worked with the bargaining groups.
Thank you. We do appreciate your representing us well in the MML, Mr. Brubaker.
Thank you.
Mr. Alshire.
A couple of comments. First is, I'd like to thank staff for putting on the breast cancer awareness event at the Hagerstown Greens last Friday. I think it was well-attended, and I think that the more that that facility gets used, the better, and there is no really any way better to promote it than those types of activities. You know, I know a lot of people look at an amenity like that and say, you know, that there is a waste, but here's the reality. We either invest in it, or we get rid of it. And if we do not have the fortitude to remove it, then we need to properly invest in it so that it is as self-supportive of an amenity as it possibly can be. The second is, I made some comments the other week about the approach to address the issues in our urban core, one of which is the police legislation, another of which, though, is the operations of certain businesses. By specific example, the Hookah Lounges, I would like to discuss at some point. I know we got an article where there is another jurisdiction in Maryland now looking at some regulatory language to address those types of operations. They are pretty well unregulated in the state of Maryland, and I think that's a conversation we need to have at some point, no different than any other types of businesses that we have those types of discussions on. The third is, we got some email correspondence of activities over at the Reach Shelter over the past few weeks, and I think that that falls in line, again, with the types of activities that we have operating within our urban core. I think that we should, as a body, expect that those types of operations occur in an appropriate and responsible manner, and if they cannot do so, then I think we have an obligation to either ensure that they do or not have them there as that service to the individuals that would seek them. The fourth item is, we have a meeting that we've been invited to on Friday morning with the Greater Hagerstown Committee. This is sort of the annual meeting where the city and the county go, or the elected folks, and present and hear from the Greater Hagerstown Committee on some of the issues affecting the larger community. As I said in my email correspondence, my preference, and I do plan to attend, would have been, and to be for future meetings, that we sort of have, you know, a facet and a number of items that we do plan to present, rather than sort of spend the meeting getting presented to. The last item that I'll address is a bit in relation to the comments here this evening from the various employees, and also in comments from fellow council members, and I will say this very frankly, Lou was right, I did not vote for the Springstead study. If premonition serves any truth, as I said then, when we compare ourselves to communities like Howard County, the study is flawed from its very inception, and so I could not in good conscience look at a budget and the long-term ramifications to that budget and vote in favor of that any more than I would have done if I would have been on the council when the city, the previous administration, and those decisions aside, implemented what equated to about a 12.5 cent tax decrease, much to their credit, I probably would have split that difference, and if that gives folks any inclination as to where I would sort of set my limit as it applies to any type of tax increase, you know, I hope that's pretty clear. And I think that that would have bore different results at this time than we're seeing. That said, I'd like to thank the folks that spoke from the police employee group for adhering to the rules that I think we've generally agreed to, which is to not talk about specifics of current negotiations, although my preference would be that all of those types of discussions be held in public, because while one gentleman may point out that, you know, answers come from this body, really, in my mind, a good bit of those answers come from the people that pay the bills, and that's the city taxpayer. And so I enjoy instances such as this, when we do have this discord in public, because I think it allows the taxpayer to do exactly what they are entitled to do and obligated and responsible to do, which is weigh in on these types of decisions that affect them in the court of public opinion. And I'm sure if nothing else comes from this meeting this evening, we will certainly have our taxpayers weigh in on these very types of discussions, as informal as they may be, have this evening. So, thank you.
Thank you. I also want to recognize that it is Crime Prevention Month, and it never makes me feel safer than to have all these police here in the room with us today, and when I see you guys out on the street. And I love to see also, I don't know the gentleman's name, Captain with the Fu Manchu, but I see him out there walking the streets of Hagerstown and downtown. Well, I recognize that you're staying healthy, and you're out on the street and looking out for the public safety as well. So it takes a community to prevent crime. If you see anything happening, don't hesitate to call the police, but I appreciate the work that all of our public safety employees do on behalf of all of the citizens. I want to recognize too that we had the grand opening for Bickles last Friday, it was fantastic. We had much better weather than the previous week, and I hope everybody brings in their skis to get sharpened or buys a new pair and takes a look at what they have to offer there. Also today, we held a special event at City Park to roll out the smoking ban. No longer will folks be able to light up in city parks, and we hope that everybody voluntarily complies with that new rule. And I want to thank the Girls from Girls Inc. for coming out to do a demonstration on how far secondhand smoke can go, and want to recognize their involvement. And couldn't be more excited about the Mummer's Parade coming up this weekend. Look forward to a big crowd here in Hagerstown. I want to thank the Alsacia Club for all the work that they do and have done with this event. I believe this is, what, the 82nd year, or something along those lines, and only war and snow have kept it from happening, so we hope neither of those things happen this weekend. And we will be having the first dog costume parade at Fairgrounds Park, starting at noon. We'll be right there at the dog park at Fairgrounds Park, so we invite everybody to come out for that. And, yes.
Just one last item, because we usually don't have this ability, but I just wanted to note one final thing as it relates to our discussions on the budget. As most folks may have seen over the last several weeks, what we've done is we've taken the budget, and we've started to dissect it in its broader format, and we'll spend about the next six months doing that. We certainly can't look at any one issue in a vacuum, and so we're taking sort of the revenue side, the expense side, the capital side, so that we don't get a budget in March and make a decision in two months, but rather get to that budget in March and have a good bit of those decisions made, so we can address these very issues that you bring before us this evening. That is part of what I would call a larger game plan, at least part of the game plan that I think I've laid out from first stepping into this seat, which includes restabilizing some of these neighborhoods that we drive around and see a lot of homes that are vacated that weren't four years ago. It includes removing urban blight, like we've been doing, so that we don't have to answer to vacated buildings that end up burned out, or old light plants that sit there forever, as well as investing in a broader scope of our downtown, rather than, and then sort of sinking it in one specific project and our budget and working with our other governmental entities. I would only note, you know, that doesn't include any big items like a stadium or other big things that we would spend money on. That includes a rather broader approach and a game plan to address this, the failing tax base that we have.
Mr. Brubaker. Round two.
One sentence. I would only say that many of the people sitting up here, again, were involved in setting out the agenda that Mr. Alshire was referring to.
Yes, completely agree with that.
Many of the people here were involved in.
Agreed. Anyone else? Okay. That'll be the end of our council comments. The next item of business on our agenda is the minutes. I would note that the minutes for September 17 are not available, so that should be reflected in the motion.
Mayor hereby move for the approval of minutes. These presented to Mayor and Council meetings held on September 3, September 6, September 10, and September 24, all of 2013.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Muntzen. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and the minutes are approved. Next item on the consent, or on the agenda is the consent agenda. I would note that the clerk distributed some information on the vehicle equipment replacement schedule, disposal information justification, just as supporting documentation for the vehicle purchases.
Mayor hereby move that all the consent agenda be approved. These presented.
Second.
Have a motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Alshire. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda being approved, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Next up on unfinished business, item A is the approval of an ordinance for the transfer of land 21 to 23 North Locust Street, Burkitt's Deli.
Mayor hereby move for the approval of an ordinance authorizing the transfer of land adjacent 21 to 23 North Locust Street. The property will be conveyed to CB Properties LLC to be used by Burkitt's Deli as an outdoor cafe.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker.
Just a comment. I eat lunch down at Burkitt's often, and quite frankly, the improvements that we participated in and helped make happen down there has gone a long way toward increasing his business, and he's, and Mr. Burkitt's a very happy man about that.
That's great.
So this is a good piece of work on behalf of a downtown merchant.
Any other discussion? Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Metzner. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ordinance is approved. Item B under unfinished business is the approval of an ordinance to quitclaim 216 North Cleveland Avenue.
Mayor hereby move for the approval of an ordinance to authorize the execution of a quitclaim deed for a strip of unimproved land at the rear of 517, 521, 523, and 525 Jefferson Street, as requested by Christ Lutheran Church. Strip of land is not needed for any public purpose. Second.
Have a motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Muntzen. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ordinance is approved. Onto new business, I would note that we are removing from the agenda items C and D under new business, and with that, we'll go to item A, introduction of an ordinance amending the property maintenance code for smoke detectors.
That's a good question. Let's see if we have a minute here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did. I skipped one, my apologies. We're still on unfinished business. Approval of an ordinance accepting an offer to transfer certain properties to the city located at 1921 and 23 West Antietam Street.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and city council to approve an ordinance accepting an offer to transfer accepting an offer to transfer real property known as 1921-23 West Antietam Street to the city of Hagerstown. The property will be transferred to the city from the bankruptcy trustee and satisfaction of a city lien placed on the property. The lien amount is $90,417.35. The lien is for the cost of city performed emergency work following a fire in February 2013. If the city does not intervene, it is likely the property will simply continue to deteriorate, and at a future time, the city will once again be forced to take emergency measures. It is the intent of the city to have the demolition of the structure begin within ninety days following the property transfer.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Munson and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
Just tongue-in-feet. It would be nice if sometime the fire department didn't respond so quickly.
Second.
Duly noted. Just a comment. I don't know if I, I don't know about the rest of the council, but I think it's important to note that this isn't a gift. This is not property that we would have likely acquired in this manner or otherwise, and it is clearly the result of the irresponsibility of those that sought to invest in it, as well as those that hold the lien on that investment. And it is instances such as this where we are left with no alternative but to expend funds unnecessarily to address these types of issues.
I would add that it wasn't an investment on the part of the current owner, but a speculative investment, perhaps.
That's a good addition.
And just to note, the effective date of this would be in November 22nd, as this is, the date of passage would, the effective date would be a month after this. So, within ninety days of that, the city is hoping to have that property demolished.
Also, Mayor, I want to make a comment that having it demolished is going to be quite hefty. Not only are we looking at what was taking place before as what we had to do, but the demolition's going to be very salty.
Thank you. Any other comments? Motion made by Mr. Munson and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we're on to new business. Item A is the introduction of an ordinance amending the property maintenance code for smoke detectors.
Mayor hereby move the Mayor and City Council to introduce an ordinance to amend the city of Hagerstown, Chapter 64, Article III, property maintenance, to update the smoke alarm requirements to be compliant with state law. These updates will establish standards for power source in one and two-family dwellings and a construction date for required interconnection. This amendment will improve the safety of residents and first responders.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and the ordinance is introduced. Next, item B is the introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 176 Peddlers and Transient Merchants.
Mr. Mayor hereby move for the Mayor and Council to introduce an ordinance to replace Chapter 176 Peddlers and Transient Dealers of the city code with a new Chapter 176 to be titled Vendors, Peddlers, and Transient Dealers. The new chapter establishes the requirements and procedures for the issuance of licenses, establishes fees, and provides for denial or relocation of licenses and penalties for violation of the chapter.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Alshire and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and the ordinance is introduced. Once again, item C, having to do with the extension of the operating agreement for the Youth Hockey Association and the approval of a resolution for the University System of Maryland and Police Services MOU. Those items have been removed from the agenda and will be appearing at a later date.
Are these motions being removed, simply removed, or are we making motion to table them?
I'm simply removing them from the agenda. They will reappear at a later date. Item E is the approval of a resolution, a lease agreement with James Harsh, the Mulchman, for property located at 931 Eldridge Drive.
Mr. Mayor hereby move for the Mayor and City Council to authorize the execution and delivery of a lease between the city of Hagerstown and James Harsh, the Mulchman, for property located at 931 Eldridge Drive. The lease will establish a one-year term with annual rent of $3,600 and the option to renew for one year.
Motion made by Mr. Alshire and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The lease is approved. Next up, item F, the approval of a resolution establishing the city's vision and commitment for housing in neighborhoods throughout the city.
Mr. Mayor hereby move for Mayor and City Council approval of a resolution establishing a citywide vision and commitment to housing in neighborhoods. This vision and commitment resolution emphasizes the importance of diversity, safety, community, pride, investment, maintenance, and identity for housing in neighborhoods. Strong housing in neighborhoods are necessary for community development, economic development, and quality of life. Staff will utilize this resolution as a guide by which all housing in neighborhood programs and initiatives and proposed legislation will be measured.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? Just a quick note. I think this speaks to the heart of the issue of the restabilization of the neighborhoods, and as much as I probably would have liked to sit and pick it apart until it was perfect, I think that the more important component held me to simply saying, let's go ahead and put it forward and see how it works, because I don't think this is territory we've really entered before. So...
And also, this is a precursor to legislation that will be on tap with staff coming before us, I believe, in the next month to propose some legislation along these lines. So, I appreciate the work that staff's done on creating this vision and look forward to seeing what you got for us. Any other discussion?
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution carries. Next up is the approval of a resolution designating the city of Hagerstown as a character counts community.
Mr. Mayor hereby move for Mayor and City Council approval of a resolution designating the city of Hagerstown as a character counts community. Through this designation, the Mayor and City Council encourage all citizens to model the six pillars of character: trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. The city will work with the Character Counts Coalition and other partners to incorporate character counts principles both within our organization and throughout the community.
Motion made by Mr. Alshire and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Next up is item H, approval of a citywide down payment rehabilitation assistance program part of Invest Hagerstown.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the Mayor and Council to approve the citywide down payment rehabilitation assistance program with a funding level of $150,000. The purpose of this program is to strengthen and support city neighborhoods by incentivizing homeownership of structures that have been vacant for extended periods of time. The program will have no income restrictions and will provide a loan to grant up to $7,500 for home buyers purchasing a vacant home in the city of Hagerstown. Program guidelines are attached. Funding for this program will come from the General Fund Reserve as approved in the fiscal year 14 budget. Let me say, Mr. Mayor, that this is a very important program.
Motion made by Mr. Munson and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is the approval of an updated guidelines to the City Center Residency Initiative Program, and this is also the down payment component.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the Mayor and Council to approve the revised guidelines to the down payment component of the City Center Residency Initiative Program, the funding level of $100,000. The revised guidelines will replace the original down payment assistance amounts with the new amount of $10,000 for eligible application. Program funds may now be used for down payment, rehabilitation, or a combination of both. The updated guidelines will strengthen this existing program and offer more attractive incentives to encourage homeownership in the city center. Funding for this program will come from the General Fund Reserve as approved in the FY14 budget.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
Yes, I do want to say that the last two items, again, I talk of this equation and the need for balance. We have to invest in every component of the city, and so, you know, we have very limited funds, and we've got to invest in this type of thing, because if we don't, then that tax base is going to drop still further. With a lot of these things, we're trying to find out what will work, to be honest, and there's cities that are wealthier than us that don't have to make these expenditures because they've, you know, they're already there. We don't have the magic answers, but then I haven't heard anyone that does. So, we're trying, and these are limited expenditures, but there are ways we're trying to invest in our community, just as investing in staff is a way of investing in our community as well, and we all recognize that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the approval of a memorandum of understanding for the Safe Routes to Schools Grant.
Mr. Mayor hereby move for the approval memorandum of understanding for the acceptance of a grant in the amount of $233,000 for the construction of multi-use space in the vicinity of Best Elementary School.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
Yes, thank you to the State Highway Department for providing these funds.
Absolutely. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? MOU is approved. Next up, item K, approval of the extension of the city administrator's contract.
Mr. Mayor hereby move for the Mayor and City Council approval to extend the city administrator's employment contract as attached. The term of this extension will be June 13, 2014 through June 12, 2015. Second.
Any discussion?
I would only like to thank Bruce for his many, many years of a city administrator and make a note that it was he who requested this one-year extension versus a longer extension.
Any other discussion?
I, Mr. Mayor, I would too like to thank Bruce for his many years of dedication, hard work. It takes a, it takes a special person to hang in there in this kind of a, kind of a responsible job for 21 years. He's done it, and he's done it well. And progress has been tough, but during, during his time here, we've made progress. And until June 12, 2015, we're going to make a lot more promise, right, Bruce?
Indeed. I think, I speak for all the citizens of Hagerstown when I thank you for your integrity, for your fiscal responsibility. I think that, as it's been noted, it's a very difficult job, and especially to shepherd the city through such tough economic times is not easy. So, thank you for your service.
And we'll save the rest of the thanks for June 2015.
Right.
Indeed. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The contract is extended. Item L is the acceptance of the cops hiring grant.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for Mayor and Council approval and acceptance of the community-oriented policing services cops hiring program in the amount of $250,000. This grant will fund two positions and will increase the Hagerstown Police Department sworn officer positions from 105 to 107.
We have a motion made by Mr. Munson and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the grant is accepted. Next up is the approval of a purchase for four 2014 Ford police vehicles.
Mr. Mayor hereby move for Mayor and Council approval of the purchase of four 2014 police vehicles. Funding for these purchases shall come from FY13 General Fund revenues. The vehicles will be purchased from Breakford, Annover, Maryland in the amount of $173,498.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Alshire and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Chief can go buy four police cars now.
All right. Next up is the adoption of the vision and mission statement.
Mr. Mayor hereby move for Mayor and Council adoption of a new vision and mission statement as follows. Vision: A diverse, business-friendly, and sustainable community with clean, safe, and strong neighborhoods. And the mission: Providing the most efficient and highest-quality services and municipal location of choice for all customers.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The vision and mission statement is adopted. Next up is item O, approval of a license agreement for URS Corporation. This is for the central chemical groundwater monitoring well.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move to execute a license agreement between the city of Hagerstown and the URS Corporation for the installation of groundwater monitoring well on city-owned property at 730 West Franklin Street.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item P is the approval of extension to water and wastewater police to supply water service to lots at Van Leeuwer Manor. I don't think that was supposed to be the wastewater police policy.
That's a new, new force, isn't it?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor hereby move for the, the Mayor and Council approve, approve an exemption to the water and wastewater policy under exemption to system improvement in order to supply water service for no more than 18 lots at Section 17 Van Leeuwer Manor.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
Well, besides helping out these homes, the city will benefit from many of the improvements being made to our system.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is item Q, approval of purchase of time and attendance management system.
Mr. Mayor hereby move for Mayor and Council approval of the purchase of time and attendance management software from Intellitime Systems Corporation in the amount not to exceed $203,663.05. The system would replace all manual time clocks in all city installations, as well as potentially all paper time reporting. The recommended vendor is not the low bid due to the low bid not beating a satisfactory comfort level with the committee on their ability to deal with the complexity of the public safety, time, and attendance. Funding is included in the technology fund balance of the Capital Improvement Fund of the FY2013-2014 budget.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Alshire and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is item R, the approval of the City Center Holiday Parking Program.
Mr. Mayor hereby move for Mayor and Council to approve the recommended City Center Holiday Parking Plan to allow two hours of free parking in the University District and Arts and Entertainment District parking decks on weekdays beginning Monday, November 25, 2013, through Wednesday, January 1, 2014. Parking in the decks after 4:00 PM in the evenings and all day Saturday and Sunday will be free. Parking in the city center, central business district, street, and lot meters will continue to be free after 5:00 PM and all day Saturday and Sunday as it is normally throughout the year. Parking enforcement of metered spaces along the streets and in city-owned lots will be suspended during the city-recognized holidays of Thanksgiving, November 21st and 22nd, and Christmas, December 24th and 25th. Second.
I do think those dates for Thanksgiving might be inaccurate. I think it's the following Thursday and Friday, 28th and 29th.
May I amend the motion accordingly?
So.
Second.
So moved. Okay. Any discussion?
Well, I just want to say that it might seem a little detailed to read all that in the motion. Ordinarily, you could attach in a memo. But I think what we want to do is make people aware of the benefit of coming downtown and the fact that we do offer this every year in the holiday season. And it's a very reasonable price to begin with, but that this program is available. And that's why there's a detailed motion.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Last but not least, the approval of funding support for the Washington County Historical Society.
Mayor hereby move for mayor and council approval of $2,000 in city funding support for repairs to the Miller House. The city's funding will come from the general fund.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Munson and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion?
And let me point out, Mr. Mayor, that the Washington County Historical Society brings people downtown to use restaurants and shop. And this $2,000 will soon be paid back.
Well, and they're, they're supplying a lot more in repairs. This is just a small part of it.
Any other discussion?
Well, I think that if, I mean, if somebody's looking for justification for this small expense, you need to look no further than the fact that we're going to spend about $250,000 on a building that's empty that we don't want. So.
True enough. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we are adjourned.